Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this workshop for the council of the borough of Gettysburg. We do have a lot to cover tonight. We do have a quorum. We do ask, make sure everybody, if you are here visiting tonight, please sign in over by the door, especially if you intend to speak tonight. I don't personally have any announcements, and we don't have any special presentations, but I would like to hand this over to Madam Mayor, who does have some community news she'd like to share.
Yes, today Mary Alice Natter, Audi, was laid to rest. She was a pioneer in this community, and a lot of us wouldn't be sitting around this table if it wasn't for her efforts. She helped with the Office of Aging. She helped with being the mother of our first Martin Luther King celebration. She was a pioneer in everything, fair housing. Just led, she led the African-American Museum, which Mr. Moon and I, President Moon and I were talking about. She was a pioneer and led this community through the 60s and a lot of stuff, and was also a friend of Councilwoman Saunders' father, who I know, Nelson Monzel, and just a lot of good people. And she will be sorely missed, and I owe a lot to her because I would probably not be sitting here if it wasn't for Mary Alice.
Thank you. She will be missed. I'd like to open the floor up for a public comment. This first segment is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. We ask that you use the podium. Please limit yourself to five minutes. We need you to state your name and address of residence, please. Is there any public comment?
Good evening. Randy Wallett, Council President with the Christ Lutheran Church, 44 Chambersburg Street here in Gettysburg. I've spoken to you twice before, so I won't bore you with the same speech again, but I did want to take a couple of minutes to just tell you what happens on Sunday mornings in front of our church. This month, I've been a greeter, and I stand out on the sidewalk, and I greet the congregants as they come to church, and I welcome them. And welcome any visitors that walk by, too, that are visiting the town. But many, many times, twice, three, four, five times, I'm out there, I go out and help somebody out of their car that had a chance to park in front of our church, get their walker out, help them on the sidewalk to the ramp to get to the elevator to come to church. It's not once, multiple times every Sunday. And these are people that count on being able to park there. These are citizens, people that have lived in Gettysburg for decades. They have built this town. They have been part of the success of what we have. And they want to come to church, and they need a place to park. And I just ask you to please consider restoring the bags in front of the church on Sunday mornings in front of Christ Lutheran Church. It's very, very important to our congregants. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Steve Herr. I've served as the pastor of Christ Lutheran Church in Gettysburg since 1999, and it's 44 Chambersburg Street. Church is actually 30 Chambersburg Street, pardon me, it's just 44. I just want to reiterate what Randy has shared, and it's something that our congregational leadership team, as well as our congregation, has discussed, and as we've reflected back over my time here, certainly, the bag situation has worked very well for us. I remember back in 2002, we had a, we were getting ready to launch a $1.6 million renovation of the church, and we sat down, we had months of conversation, and there was a lot of serious conversation about, do we move out of the borough? We have an aging building that is very costly, and do we modernize our building? Do we find new property that allows for greater parking? Because parking's always been an issue for our congregation in particular. And in the end, we decided to stay put because we wanted to be a part of the borough, we wanted to serve the people of Gettysburg, we wanted to continue to maintain the historic structure, but also be a vibrant part of the downtown community. And we knew that doing that meant that we were going to have to invest in the building, but also, we knew that it was going to mean restricted parking for us. We have about 10 spaces behind the church that we're able to use, which quickly fill up on Sunday morning. We reserve some of those for mobility-challenged folks. The bags in front allowed us to be able to at least carve out the six spaces in front of our property to allow folks who are mobility-challenged, not only folks who have a handicapped sticker on their car, but also folks who are, might be recovering from knee surgery or hip surgery, or who have a walker, who have a wheelchair. And just when we did our renovation, we made all of our facility handicapped accessible so that folks can get, once they get onto our property, they can easily get into the building. We have an elevator now, ramping, et cetera. But those six spaces in front are just instrumental in just helping our folks be able to easily get in and out. Without the bags there, you know, I, what I notice is that a lot of folks just pull in and park there, not that there isn't other parking available, but if you're coming from the western part of town, it's just easy to slide in there. And for us, it worked very well because we took, made sure the bags were off by the end of 12 o'clock, no later than 1:00. Our folks know that by 1:00, the borough begins to, you know, meter the parking so that we need to, you know, pay for parking. We're fine with that. But at least Sunday morning, which is our main gathering time of the week, although we do have a lot of other gatherings during the week, and we're not asking for any other, you know, parking measures at other times, but primarily, those Sunday morning from 8:00 to 12:00 is just critical. And for us, the bags were just very easy, right? We pulled them on and off, and it didn't require any extra labor from the borough. It didn't require any extra signage or any extra cumbersome cost with that. So we're just looking to have you reconsider restoring that. And I appreciate your service. I know it's a role that you play as a council, so thanks for your time, and thanks for the time to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further public comment?
TJ Patel, 606 York State, Gettysburg. And I'm a supporter of the church to put the bags there. That way, the senior folks gonna need easily parking, so please support that request.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to current and old business.
Bill Chantelot, Chair of the Property Committee of Christ Lutheran Church, 44 Chambersburg Street. I just want to add one thing to what Pastor Herr said and what Randy said. I've noticed that even when all of Chambersburg Street has no cars parked on it, because of the streetscape that we have in front of our church, which is very open and welcoming, people pull in and park there first. And so the competition for those spaces that we're talking about on Sunday morning is quite, is more than it is on the other spaces on the street. So I have observed that, and people like that openness. They get out of their cars, they gather, they open strollers with their children and everything. It's very nice, but on Sunday morning, you know, we need it for, as Randy and Pastor said. So just remember that, please, that it's an inviting space for others. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further public comment? All right. We're going to move on to new business, I'm sorry, to current and old business. Our first topic this evening is the comprehensive rezoning update. Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. The big thing to talk about, we have proposed with the Planning Commission two tracks for public comment associated with the staff draft of the document, which is currently available on the borough website. There's a button that you push around the homepage that says rezoning, and it'll take you to all the information, including the maps and all the materials. The plan is to have an open house occur on July 29th. The exact time is still being determined, but it'll be in this room. An open house is a little bit different than a town hall or a general meeting like this in that it's more station setup. Individuals have an opportunity to interact with staff to discuss specific proposals, but it's not a formalized meeting where there's complete discussion on each individual topic. I guess the drafters or the Planning Commission members, et cetera. The tracks as proposed, the, as a result of, after that open house, Planning Commission will then be in a position to determine if additional public comment is necessary. If it is, we would be slowing the process down a little bit by about five months to allow for additional rezoning comment to happen on the 29th, and in addition to that September 30th, if necessary. We would also, the Planning Commission would be reviewing the document primarily in the months of August and September. The track we're on now has most of the document occurring, the review occurring in August, so it may become necessary to break those out. It just depends on how we're doing as a commission. As of this time, we don't anticipate any large projects that would take up too much time at those meetings, so we should be able to proceed, but we'll know more after the open house if it's necessary. Other than that, the zoning map is available online. That was discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting. The big changes, so to speak, are the inclusion of a revitalization district, which, that is portions of the Old Town District, but it was now going to be reclassified to enable development opportunities. Additionally, the former mixed-use districts, like the ROR district and the tourism commercial, are being revised, primarily to allow for a mix of a sliding scale of, you have more residential to more commercial and then in between. Additionally, areas of steinware are being proposed to be converted to general commercial as opposed to that mixed zone, reflecting the built environment that's been created for steinware in relationship to tourism activity. And the difference that sort of business environment has as compared to, say, Lincoln Square, still, but still recognizing the goal of having pedestrian traffic and really encouraging commerce throughout the borough's historic district. That concludes all I have, that's all I have for this evening for the rezoning, but I can answer any specific questions you may have, but we'll be having a lot of discussion about this during the summer.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the planning meeting. I want to say I think you did a really good job sort of framing this discussion for the Planning Commission, as well as for the members of the public that were present, outlining not only the borough's mission, but also the Planning Commission's mission. There's been, I think, a lot of negative impressions leading up to this meeting and suspicion that this proposed ordinance was going to increase the height limitation in this revitalization district. In your opinion, is that included in the draft of this new zoning document?
So what the draft does is it provides what's already been established by the zoning hearing board, in that you're allowed to have buildings at 72 feet in height for roughly a three-acre area of the borough that's currently zoned Old Town, so allowing the revitalization district to specifically provide incentives to enable that increased height. That's not default height, that requires, there's a little bit of, a developer would have to either provide, well, there's quite a few proffers that developer would have to make to be able to have the increased height in those instances. But overall, that's, for that specific area, that is already allowed based on the previous rulings by the zoning hearing board. But also, I mean, I've read the news, and I received a call from someone the other day that was very concerned about the skyscrapers that are going to be built in Gettysburg, and that is not what's going to be happening even after this. If the provisions of the ordinance, if you read them, you're not looking at even mid-rise buildings occurring. This is very limited in terms of that height increase, and when we're talking about the increase, it's, what, 24 feet as opposed, so it's going up from 48 feet to 72.
And aren't there dimensional standards that need to be met to qualify for that?
Oh, yes.
Right. So do you think there's any lots in the new expanded ROR district that would qualify but meet those dimensional standards?
Well, we haven't completed an analysis to establish if the lot of, lots of record would be, the premise would be that a developer would come in and consolidate the parcels to best utilize the land. Sometimes, when it's piecemeal, that can create issues with realizing the full economic development potential of a parcel. So a good example is when you're thinking about parking. Most everyone wants to have parking, but when it's a bunch of parcels, you're going to have a bunch of parking lots. When it's one parcel, you can have that built into the building, built into the site a little bit better, and what do you know, we're hopefully going to be able to enable an incentive to then allow for the increased density as a result of those types of actions. But we'll be doing some additional analysis in the coming weeks, and that's something we can provide at the 29th.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, John. So you, the phase we're in now is with the Planning Commission.
Yes.
And it's going to take probably until the fall, until council sees the draft ordinance.
So, yeah, the planning, once the Planning Commission votes to make a recommendation, then it will be brought to council. That becomes then the Planning Commission draft, and it's what you all will be making a decision based on. There are a number of, well, not too many, actually. There's a process laid out by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code that requires certain advertising standards for this type of ordinance. In particular, I believe it's a 45-day period.
45-day, yeah, notice period, and that would be, of course, prior to, I mean, the council would have to conduct a public hearing on the, on the draft ordinance, so at least one. Depending on what council wishes to do with it, could be more.
So the goal would be, though, to have this in front of council to begin just the general conversation, no later than that October 21st. Well, it would be the 22nd.
And even that would probably be a limited discussion for us as we will be kind of this deep in budget season. So realistically, we're probably not taking this up with any earnest until end of the year or into the spring. Any other questions?
I just want to thank you, John, and the Planning Commission for opening up for public dialogue, the open house on the 29th. I think that's important, and I really hope people show up and ask questions and get answers from the people working on it. I think that's important, so thank you.
Okay, unless there's anything else on the zoning, we're going to move on to the sign ordinance. We're going to stay with Mr. Whitmore on this one, and here, I think we might see a little bit more discussion.
Okay, let me just scroll down a little bit, Mr. Whitmore. Okay, so we've had an opportunity as staff to meet with representatives of the borough and county's business community and the Historic and Architectural Review Board. Basically, the proposed modifications to the draft allow for murals to preserve exterior of historic building assets while allowing for lit signage, eliminating harbor review proposals as it was not, it was poorly received, and further refine total area standards for multi-tenant buildings. The proposed modifications were included in the work session materials. These include, it's this draft document, track changes and comments. Over the course of the meetings that we've been having, it's been a balancing act to try and establish the appropriate amount of signage for, A, buildings in the historic district, but then also the multi-tenant businesses. Is this the end for this ordinance? I'm not quite sure if we're there, but this is, this is basically what I was able to draft based on previous recommendations from, or consensus from the council. We will be having an additional meeting with Destination Gettysburg, and then at that time, we can really begin having conversations and earn, well, we can have some additional conversations with council, but we'll be at a point where we can probably have this thing come up for a vote.
All right. If members all had a chance to review this over the weekend, is there anything anybody would like to discuss? Questions, concerns, omissions, additions?
Could you show us the other redlined items?
Yes. So, I'm trying to make sure I'm doing it correctly. A lot of this, there's issues associated with the flow of the text as it's still in a draft format. One of the things that came up was the idea of interior signs, regulating what's going on inside of structures as it relates to signage. This provision right here, it's very small, it just says interior signs, but it's in relationship to signs that do not require permit, so you would be able to put in signage as long as it's behind the windows without any permit needed. So, yeah, as a result, building windows will be expected to have illuminated signs directed towards pedestrians, but will not have exterior illuminated signs. And that's because a little bit further down, we're going to be proposing that illuminated signs be not, internally illuminated signs that are outside of a building would not be permitted in the historic district. Looking at the size requirements, we've made quite a few changes. Looking at this, the individual store in the building, not multi-tenant, you'd still have 50 square foot of signage. For the structures with more than one business tenant, this, this was something, trying to find the middle or the, I guess, the good zone for this, but basically, what's being proposed is that all structures, you'd have business tenants, if they have a business tenant entrance, like a doorway, they'd be able to have 50 square feet of signage. There's still going to be instances where that's, that's going to be a lot of signage. So one of the things we've also done with this is remove the provisions related to a directory sign. As a result, it would be pretty similar to current standards as it relates to maximum area. If you want, if a business wanted to have a placard on a directory sign that was geared toward their maximum standard, maximum allotment, I should say. Additionally, provisions related to certificate of appropriateness reviews by the Historic Architectural Review Board and council have been removed. So as a result, there would not be a method for increased signage by default in the ordinance for businesses in the historic district. Outside of the historic district, we're modifying that to no more than 100 square feet of signage as there was concern regarding the use of the entire building perimeter as a, the one-to-one ratio, so one square foot of signage for every one linear foot of building. This would then be capped at 100 feet, so in theory, you would have opportunity for those businesses that need increased signage to provide it, but still maintaining quite a, well, maintaining total allotment. This is probably been really beneficial when we look at the actual location of the historic district. Those commercial areas outside of the historic district, they're generally right along, right near residential areas, so this should provide, while there's going to be additional signage opportunities, it's not going to be open-ended as before, which could have created some problems. Let's see. So, yeah, the internally illuminated signage located on the exterior of a building shall not be permitted in the Gettysburg Historic District. This would be a continuation of current standards as provided in the code.
Could you go back up to the last one?
Yeah.
Is that per facade in the historic district?
So in the historic district, it would be 50 feet maximum.
Wherever?
Yes.
Wherever you put it.
Yes. Well, 50 feet maximum, and then there is a provision that we placed in the regulations where signage is not visible from public right-of-way or public area, that it doesn't count as signage in this regard. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't need a permit for that signage because it's not, it's not visible, it's not, it's not interfering with the public or the general view of historic integrity of the structure or district.
So personally, I think that what this does is it allows for smaller facades, more footage with the 50 square feet, but if it's a larger building, then you're restricted more. So I've always, I've been of the mind to make it ratio-based on the frontage of the building, regardless, because if you have 10-foot frontage, but you have 50 feet, you could have a lot of signage there, and it's not necessarily going to, I think, always look in line with the other buildings if it's not ratio-based for the frontage of the building. So I think if you remove the 50 feet and just say ratio-based, one-to-one, I think that's the most equitable way to do it, personally.
One-to-one on the front facade or one-to-one on each facade?
Well, the way he has it now is you'd have, the front facade is what dictates the footage that you get, and then you couldn't use that on, you'd have that many feet on whatever facade you decide to use it up on.
So I like the one-to-one, but I still question, as I did the last time we had this workshop, the facade issue, the front facade issue. For example, when you have a building on a corner, what is the facade? The whole, the whole corner? So two sides?
That, that's why staff, that's why staff is proposing the 50-square-foot maximum, removing the one-to-one ratio as it applies to all signage, with the exception of those properties outside of the historic district would have the opportunity for additional signage based on one-to-one, that one-to-one ratio. But it would only, it would not apply to the vast majority of properties in the borough as most commercial properties are located in the historic district. What the current ordinance does is it justifies, it doesn't say front facade as meaning like the, the area with the door. In instances where you're on a corner, you're a corner lot, you have multiple frontages or multiple alleyways or roadways in front of you, each of those sides is allowed to be contributing, contributing frontage for the purposes of signage, with the caveat that there's no more, the maximum is no more than 50 square feet of signage.
For the entire building or 50 per facade?
Well, it's 50 for the entire building. We...
So we're, in essence, we're limiting a building, we're limiting them just because they're a bigger building.
We're not limiting them any more than they've been limited for the last 50 years, and...
But we're allowing others to have more.
It looks to me like business is thriving here, so...
But we're going to allow others to have more because they're outside of the historic district?
Yes.
That's not equitable at all?
Well, it, it is in the sense that the preservation of the historic district requires additional architectural control as compared to areas outside of the historic district. But that's something council needs to decide if it, if that, if that argument is enough to limit signage opportunities. And that's something, I mean, as staff, we, we could provide you however you would like to do it, it's just I'm not, on one hand, I hear the historic preservation concerns, on the other, it's clearly the need for advertising and being equitable and being able to justify to building owners, to business tenants, how much signage they're permitted, and it has to make sense. So I, it's a tough one. So I, it's a tough one.
Well, when it comes to historical preservation, in my opinion, we are now in 2024. We no longer have dirt roads and horse-drawn carriages only in this town. We're not, I'm not of any mindset to change the architecture of our historic buildings. Not asking that. I'm saying limiting signage on, or allowing others to have more than some is not, it doesn't make sense to me.
I think we're in 2024 as well, and I think signs are there to attract people to come into the business. And it was mentioned before, we have these cell phones, smartphones where you can find where you want to go, whether it's a restaurant or, or a shop. So I think in a historic district, we should try to keep it the way it is with the 50 feet.
50 feet total regardless of the number of facades. Anyone else?
I would, I would still agree with Chad. I think the most, the fairest for all is ratio-based on your building per facade. I don't, I don't, I think that's the fairest, but...
So for the members who are expressing that, would you argue that an alley is a facade?
That's a good question.
Well, I'm asking you.
I mean, wasn't the point that you just made about public view? If I'm walking down an alley as a pedestrian, I can see the back of that building. I want a sign on it. That's a facade. I want to say, oh, I can go in there. Where's the front door? Let me find it. It's opportunity for advertising of our small business community.
You would still be able to do that though with the way it currently is, so. That's 50 feet with the whole building. So you could choose whatever facade you wanted. Is that, you could put some in the front and some on the side.
Correct. I want some on the front, I want some on the side, I want some on the, on the back.
You can do that currently though?
As long as you...
As long as it's only 50 feet, 50 square feet total of the building.
Yeah.
That's why I think the ratio is better. But, or allow it to be per facade. You know, there, yeah, it's a historic district, but a lot of our small business communities are in the historic district, and they have alleyways, and some of them even have an alley entrance. And I think it's important to allow them the opportunity to have that as much signage as we're going to allow somebody else from the outside of the historic. Or if it's going to be 50, allow it 50 per facade. That's my opinion. 50 per facade, simple.
Anyone else?
I was just wondering if Harb has received any concerns, complaints about the number of signs and the, what about the historical integrity is the argument?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Schaefer, but I can confidently say that he is very concerned with the potential for 50 square feet of signage on any building. In particular, looking at other historic districts, York, Frederick, they're really, they get pretty limited in the amount of signage that you could put on a structure. That, that's what Harb, that, that, one of the reasons why staff has brought this back is because Harb really did take issue with the, with the, I guess, the increase in opportunity for signage in the historic district. That's not to say that you cannot have increased signage, it's just we were cognizant of that when we brought this draft to you. So yeah, there, there is concern and rightfully, yes, signage, if it's not, it's difficult because we're not in the business of regulating content, and content is what can really kill character. So it's, it's a tricky balancing act, and this ratio scheme is really the, I guess, fortunately, it's the only standard that's really nationally known to utilize to be able to establish signage that's appropriate for building facades. Now, I can go either way with this. We will provide you with what makes the most sense for council. If it makes sense, at the next review, we could provide multiple types of, not multiple type, but multiple, multiple signage maximums so that council could either pick a specific standard that most aligns with what council would like to see, or we could, we could present a draft with language that you can either change on the fly, or we can go into the drafting process during the actual ordinance phase.
Could you give visuals maybe of existing structures in the historic district or hypothetical? I think 50 feet's bigger than a lot, 50 square feet's bigger than a lot of people think. Just what, because I've walked Chambersburg Street and Baltimore Street, and I look at the signage, and most buildings, it's not near 50 feet. So could you give us some visuals maybe of current, you know?
So currently, they're not allowed 50 square feet. They're, their size is a ratio, so their maximum square footage is based on the width of their facade. So you wouldn't see that 50 square feet on a more, on a narrower storefront.
Right.
It would have to be at least a 50-foot wide storefront for you to see a 50-square-foot...
But could you, you could simulate it to where it would look like?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
In previous positions, we've used what we called the plywood test where it was, you visualize a sheet of plywood, say by four, 32 square feet. One of the challenges is look, when you place signage visually further, it goes from the eye, it's smaller it appears, but it can be huge. A good example is the Gettysburg Hotel. Their signage, they're, they're able to maintain it even though it's non-conforming, but it's, it's well over 50 square feet. You're able to, that's a good example, like, when you think of, thinking of 50 square feet is going to be a challenge, but stat, we can, we can provide some potential renderings to give you a visual idea, especially when viewed from a distance. So that's something staff can do for the next meeting.
Thank you.
That'd be helpful. So the, the draft of this that we looked at in December that was tabled did not make substantial changes to the existing rules, which I think most businesses have worked well under for decades. It really was a more permissive version of the ordinance that was, whose sole intent was to correct the reed issues in our existing ordinance, but then additionally, we made a couple of changes, right? We allowed advertisements to be painted on substrates, we allowed the murals, we made a few really minor changes that were ultimately a more permissive document. And that was tabled based on, at least in my memory, and anyone can feel free to correct me here, two questions from members of the business community that seemed valid to a lot of us. One was, is 50 square feet adequate when there is more than one business in the facade? And I would argue that it is not. 50 square feet split between three businesses is not adequate. And then the second question was the question of multiple facades. So those really are the two things that were outstanding in the draft version that we were not able to vote on in December. I personally could see my way to 50 square feet per facade. You know, I mean, if people want to argue that the alleys are a place where you're being exposed to the visiting public, I think that's a stretch. But the flip side of that coin is, the sign is really going to be unseen in an alley and is not going to affect the overall look and feel of our historic district because the alleys are really only used by, for local traffic. And that's not just because of common usage, but also because the alleys are not for, through traffic. They are for local access to businesses and homes. So does that sign drive business? Probably not. But does it detract from the streetscape of our historic downtown? Also probably not. We do have some commercial properties in the historic district that would be entitled to three facades. You know, they, they sit on a corner and they have an alley behind them, so they would have, they could put signage on all three sides. And if the side of a building is 250 feet long, the, the ratio model would give them 250 square feet of signage on that wall. And that's, I don't, how many sheets of plywood is that, right? Like, I don't know, 20 sheets of plywood or something? I don't, can't do math. That seems excessive. That seems like the very thing this ordinance was adopted for in the 1970s to control the commercial, what's the word? The overpowering nature of commercial signage here in the borough. I personally am often reminded with letters to the editor and people stopping me on the street, that the sanctity of our historic preservation is inviolable. So we, we do have an obligation to preserve the historic downtown. So yeah, there can be different rules, I think, in the historic district than outside of the historic district. So do please put together some visuals so people can kind of get a sense of what we'd be, we'd be talking about. And we've got at least two different models there, so let's see what a visual representation of each might look like. Does anybody else have any other issues in this draft they wanted to talk about?
I would just encourage the, the staff, the working group, I think there's one, and my colleagues to speak to multiple small business owners, especially in the historic district, specifically retail businesses and restaurant owners, and not just the membership organizations that they may or may not be members of.
Okay. I have a question about, let's see, section 19105, signs, signs not requiring a permit. Item B, metal signs affixed to a structure not exceeding one square foot. That seems pretty wee. What are we talking about there?
So those are usually going to be your mandatory signage for like fire control systems. Additionally, I, this is coming from the old ordinance as well, the current ordinance as well. I believe it was a carve-out to allow for like hours of operation, just general messaging that isn't necessarily going to be, it's going to be small, but it also just, it would be, it would be allowed for that regulation while, while not getting into the content specific for those types of signs.
Yeah, I mean, one square foot, I mean, that's pretty small. That's like three inches by four inches or two inches by six inches. I mean, can you think of examples of where we might see those in the environment currently?
Just the hours of operation size. That's, I mean, those are usually one square foot.
What page number? Sorry.
That is on page 12, 19105 sub B.
Additionally, I'm not sure if this, that specific one was related to the Civil War signage, but many of those as well.
Yeah. And then the draft that we had in December did specifically provide for the painting of a commercial mural on a, on the substrate. Is that in here? Because I didn't feel like I saw it.
So this will allow for buildings that have already been painted, they'll be eligible to have painted commercial messaging. Murals that are, public murals, the ones that are backed by a governmental body, they are also, my understanding, yeah, signs of murals in the historic district painted directly on non-painted exterior building siding, any surface that is not, okay, where is it? Okay, yeah, so with, within the Gettysburg Historic District, murals that are not considered public arts, those that are not governmental, there's no governmental assignment to it, shall be limited to 50 square feet of area per building and shall not be installed directly upon an existing non-painted building's exterior facade. So in the event that you have an unpainted building and you want to have a mural, you would have to put up some kind of backing physically onto the structure, which would then be, that backing would have to have a harbor view.
But had the building already been painted?
Damage is done.
Damage is done. Got it. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Concerns, omissions, additions? All right, I'm not hearing any, so thank you, Mr. Whitmore.
So we'll plan on providing additional material then for the next workshop with the rendering.
Super. All right. Chad, we are going to talk about the Gettysburg inner loop.
Yes, and I can be pretty brief tonight. I just wanted to give you a heads up, and in the next series of meetings, I will be following up with some more detail. But I wanted to give you guys a heads up that, of course, I did present at your council business meeting two weeks ago that this project is out to bid. We're going to be opening bids next Tuesday and hopefully awarding to a contractor at your council meeting in July. At that point, we'll start the contract process with the contractor, getting them to start ordering their, their concrete structures that are pre-cast, so that'll take a little bit of time, but probably be another month and a half to two months until they really start construction. We're expecting maybe August, at the soonest, that we're going to be starting construction with the project. And at that time, there's going to be your typical construction impacts to the, to the property owners, to the businesses. We do the best we can all the time, but it's inevitable there's going to be an impact. I'm not going to sugarcoat this. It's going to be loud, it's going to be dusty, just like every other construction project. There's going to be street closures. One of the things, so, and Charles put a couple of bullets here on your agenda just to kind of give me a, a couple of talking points. This will have an impact on Gettysburg College. We're speaking specifically with Jim Beasacker. In two weeks from now, we'll have our contractor in, in direct contact with him and coordinating things with the college. The railroad street businesses, essentially that's, the three businesses that I feel like are going to get impacted the most are Antica Napoli, the laundromat right behind Antica, the pizza place, and then a flower shop. And I'll come back to that, why I think that those three property owners are going to get impacted the most by this construction here after, when I get to the, the overnight boring bullet is your next item. So just like we did on Stratton Street, whenever you bore, and we have to, when we go into the railroad tracks, we've got to go through this boring, CSX requires continuous overnight boring, all day, every day. It'll be at least a week, maybe two weeks, while there'll be a rather large diesel engine running a boring machine under the railroad tracks, which isn't necessarily quiet. It will be outside of the typical noise ordinance allotment. There's no way around it. That's, it's requirements by CSX if we want to have a pipe. Your ordinance, it doesn't take necessarily a waiver of the ordinance requirement because it does allow for this in the construction, but we still try to make everybody as aware as possible. What we did on Stratton Street is we created a bubble around the construction site of where we think the sound's going to travel to, and we sent flyers to every property owner. So we'll be working with Sarah and do a mail merge to all the property owners who are within a certain area. And that'll be probably go out, once we know the, the exact dates, I think it's going to be at least a week that that'll happen, and it might be up to two weeks. It won't be before August, but it won't be later than November. We really need to get this contractor under contract first. We really need to get this contractor under contract first, and that him dictate his schedule of exactly whenever we think this is going to happen, and then we'll send out those, those notices. In the meantime, like I said, we're going to start talking to some property owners that are going to be the most impacted. Whenever that bore, so, so our contract requires the contractor always keep one lane open in the streets, so they can get people in and out of their business. Except for those continuous overnight boring operations. There won't be, there's rather large boring pits, where they got to drop these big diesel engines in. You read this is a 40, 42-inch diameter boring that's going to happen. So, it's a rather large equipment, a large boring pit that's going to be in the street. CSX inspectors will have to be there every day, all day, overnight. Surveyors will have to be there measuring the railroad tracks with these little prisms, making sure that the railroad tracks don't move during this operation. Same thing we did on Stratton Street a few years ago. It went pretty smoothly. We didn't have, since we notified the property owners in advance, we didn't have any complaints about it. Everybody was, everybody was aware that this was going to happen. So, it's basically the same thing. So, I'm kind of giving you a heads up, that this is going to be coming down the road. I'm guessing September, October. I'll know better within the next month or two, and I'll, and I'll kind of keep, keep you updated. Oh, so, so I was saying, when we close the street down, the one property that you're not going to be able to get into is that laundromat, Antica Pizza, and the flower shop. You're not going to be able to get into that during that two-week process, that two-week shutdown period.
Oh, my God.
So, we're going to ask you to, to go buy pizza and support those shops, as I will be.
Have the business centers been talked to at all yet?
No, they have not. We're going to be, start initiating those processes over the next couple of weeks. Again, we don't know the exact dates of when this is going to happen, but we're going to give them a heads up that this is going to be happening sometime, maybe September-ish, and then we'll meet with, we'll have them meet directly with the contractor, once we have a contractor under contract, which again, we're hoping that will happen at your, your council meeting in July. So, I'm kind of giving you guys a first heads up here, that there's going to be more information. We'll start talking to those property owners, and then we'll have some more dialogue as we move forward. Is there any questions there about that general plan of action, or concerns that we have with, with the impacts?
Yeah. I mean, there's dorms there, there's student housing, the business access. Do you have to, you have to bore at night?
Yeah, yeah, continuous overnight.
Has to be continuous until it's done.
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Wow.
Yep. And like I said, this is exactly the way it was done on, on Stratton Street. Now, what we're hoping is, so, there's two borings here. There's a water line and there's a storm drain line. We're hoping that they'll allow us to do them both at the same time. They're, they're opposite of each other. So, they could essentially have the boring pits both in at the same time, and run both boring at the same time, so.
In opposite lanes or the same lane?
Opposite lanes. Yeah, one's in the northbound lane, one's in the southbound lane. Yep. Now, neither lane will be able to be open when this operation's happening. The whole street's going to have to be shut down, it's just too dangerous. It's a, it's a over 10-foot deep pit, 10 feet wide by 30 feet wide. It's going to be a rather big.
Drill right into the lane?
That'll be, yeah, that'll be a rectangle dug down into the lane, and they drop this big diesel engine, size of a tractor trailer, down into this ditch, and bore under the railroad tracks. So, it's, it's not something that is safe for, for having traffic open. The, the street will have to be shut down. These are really, there's, there's no way around this. This is, this is.
Right.
Is this railroad out?
This is, this will be North Washington Street, under the railroad tracks, near Railroad Street. So, otherwise, other than door-ing the boring, for the most part, we'll be able to keep the street open. Like I said, we ought to keep one lane open. If you're coming in from the east, Railroad Street's one-way, east to west, and you'll be still, always be able to get in, at least to that Gilliland Alley, so all the other businesses that, that use Railroad Street will be able to get in. You'll always be able to get in Constitution, and north from Constitution to the college. And, there'll be a little bit, little period of time where they are going to be cutting into Chambersburg Street to tie into the water line in Chambersburg Street, but that'll be limited to a day or two. So, fairly limited impacts, I'll say, south of Rail, Racehorse Alley. The biggest impacts are going to be between Racehorse Alley and Constitution, where you go into the college.
Have we ever provided parking spaces someplace else in the borough for those biz, for other businesses that have been impacted? Has that ever happened?
Yeah, we're actually doing that as we speak with, with, with the alley.
Yeah, the building across the street, the old agway, is that occupied, or is, Gettysburg College owns that? Is that a space that could be used? If you're coming off of Railroad Street and you can still make a left off of that street, you just couldn't park in the, in the, in the lot that is adjacent to the businesses? But, could people park in that, those spots?
So, the.
Walk across?
I'm not going to say no. I can tell you what the, the borough's typical, and, and I'm not sure if this ends up being a legal thing more than anything, but our typical procedures is we provide on-street parking to people that are losing their parking.
I can tell you, just from walking over the railroad tracks, technically, you can only do that in designated spots. If you cross the railroad tracks anywhere other than a crosswalk, if you will, it's trespassing on the railroad property, and you kind of frown upon it, because they're...
Well, you could walk down to the corner, and then cross and come.
Yeah, I just, I'm just saying about, to give out parking spots in the highway, no people are just going to shoot right across the railroad tracks.
I love the idea. It seems like the commonsensical approach to do that, but I think there's just a lot of other liability and property right issues, and what if somebody gets in an accident there, and now the borough's inviting the use of private properties, parking? We typically just say, you got on-street parking somewhere. We provide that for them. So, it takes away some of that potential concerns.
Delivery.
You said the, the street's going to be shut down. Is that the roadway and the sidewalks? Or just the roadway?
So, mostly just the roadway in this first project. So, you might remember, I, last month, I informed you that this is going to happen in three different phases. It's going to be, first, it's utility work, and then we're going to go through with the sidewalk work, probably in this, in January of next year until we start the sidewalks. So, mostly, it's going to be just the street that'll be shut down, sidewalks remain open. That's specifically important for the Gettysburg College, and talking to Jim, he, the students use those, those apartments right there. In January, that will change, because then, at that point, we'll start reconstructing the sidewalks. Now, that being said, and I say mostly, it's in the street, there is laterals, the service, so the main line goes down the middle of the street, but then you have service laterals in each one of those college apartments. There's a lot of them. So, each, each one of those will have a connection where that sidewalk's going to get impacted for a day. And then the next one, that sidewalk's going to get impacted for a day. So, there will be some, some temporary, I'll call those, impacts of the sidewalks, but that, that won't be impacted, like, like whenever they do this continuous overnight boring, you'll still be able to walk on the sidewalks along this, and that'll be, it'll just be roped off, and you won't be able to get into the construction site. And a lot, I'm sorry, a lot of the, I shouldn't say all of the traffic, but a lot of the traffic that does utilize those, those businesses there is by foot, that I, you know, that I've noticed, is like Antica Pizza, most people are walking in and out of there. Now, I do see plenty of people driving into the laundromat, you know, and picking up their laundry, whatever, with cars. So, they're going to be potentially impacted by this, but.
Is there any gas service there that's going to be replaced?
No.
I imagine there's no gas lines under the tracks, right?
There is a gas line.
Really?
Yes. There is.
And so, is that going to be replaced at the same time?
No. The, the gas line, for the most part, can stay where it is. There's only one gas lateral that is impacted by our boring pit that goes to the old train station that the college owns. On the north side of the railroad tracks, on the left, that building right there, there is a lateral that, that goes right through our boring pit that's going to have to get shut off temporarily. So, we're working that out with the college. Aside from that, there's pretty limited gas impacts. And there's one electric line that's going to, underground electric line that goes into the college's buildings that's going to have to get relocated, so they'll be out of power for an hour or two until that gets reestablished. But again, we're working that out with, with Jim Beasacker and his crew.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it's going to be a hugely impactful process, but it's also absolutely critical that we get this work done.
Very critical.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions about that? Anyone? Okay. Thank you, Chad.
Sure.
Becca?
Hello. So, I was going to briefly, it's not on the agenda, but I was briefly going to update on the Gilliland Alley and Legion Alley construction that we are providing on-street parking for. The pizza place and the laundromat aren't near any public parking spaces that we have. The only ones are on Washington, which would be closed off at that point. So, I mean, potentially, we could give some spaces, but they're not going to be close enough that you could walk with your laundry to, to access them. So, right now, Legion Alley and Gilliland Alley, I was, I was not sure how many cars this would involve when I was told about this two weeks ago. So, we started contacting residences and asking for their information so that we could provide on-street parking on High Street, Middle Street, and Carlyle Street. We did have to extend that to some of the parking garage, because as of 5:00 this evening, we had 75 cars involved. So, there was more cars than parking spaces on-street in those locations. So, we did have to move some to the garage, some to second blocks, and juggle some things around. As of Saturday, I had 65, 64, so I had 11 just come in after 8:00 this morning to give us their plates, and I'm sure there are probably more that will follow tonight and tomorrow, because we are ticketing those cars that do not belong there. We have everybody's license plates that have contacted us, and we have them all input in the system so that we know who should be parking there. The bags, the meters are bagged with orange bags that the, when they gave their information, that we did allow them, tell them that they could park at the orange meter bags. So, that was the update on that. Any questions on that?
My understanding from Robbie is that milling started today?
I assume.
Milling, milling's pretty much done. Tomorrow, they'll start the base, and they're going to do the base on Legion tomorrow, then they're going to go to Gilliland. Does everybody know where Gilliland is? Right behind the, the Lincoln Diner, that little alley that goes in behind the Lincoln Diner, that's Gilliland Alley. That'll happen on, I believe, Wednesday, and then Thursday, they'll come back and top Legion. So, paving's starting tomorrow and going through Thursday.
So, we're predicting conclusion this week?
I think the goal, yeah, I think Robbie's.
July 2nd, it was.
Yeah.
Originally, it was July 2nd, and that's what we did to tell everybody for parking.
That was kind of worst-case scenario, considering weather delays and other things like that, but I think he's trying to have most of it done this week.
Yeah, it sounds like they got a lot done today.
So, on to the PBS. I hope everybody had time to review that. I am going to split it up into four sections here, so that I can hopefully keep organized and my thoughts in track here. And for some of you that don't know my history, I had started part-time parking for the borough in 2002. So, when I refer to some of these things, I was on the street and only dealt with on-the-street things. I didn't do any paperwork, I didn't do anything in the office, so some of those things I'm not aware of, other than sometimes I have seen some notes and things like that, but, and then I did start full-time in 2015. I did do a little bit of the permitting and things, and then in 2019, I did become the parking manager. So, pretty much from 2019, I know exactly what happened, but previous to that, it's, it's little bits here and there, and of what people have told me and what I've seen. So, when I refer to some of those things in the PBS, it's only what I actually know. So, for the placement of the temporary use of the meter bags for specific businesses, the permitting has changed over, over the time. It was originally all paper, and then it went to Excel spreadsheet, and now we do all the permitting through our UP Safety System. And I do have a example of a permit that we can get up here. It is number seven, yes. So, when somebody applies for a permit, this is what prints off our computer. We do have to adjust it for some writing and things, as you can see our writing on there. We have to put the address, and we have to put the time, because it doesn't, I'm not sure why it always puts the end time as 11:58, but that's how the system works. So, we always write the day, the time, or the time beginning, time ending, the address, and then at the top, you can see the officers there signed off on it when they put it on and when they took it off. So, those are officer's signatures. So, then when a permit comes in, that's, it goes up on our board, so that's how the officers know that bags are supposed to be placed, signs, bucks, whatever have you. It gets moved to a current, then, like a needs-to-be-place, so, and then whenever it's placed, it gets placed on the current side, and then that way, the officers check the current side to know what would need to come off, when to come off. So, that's currently how we're operating. And, the bags have always been placed, to my knowledge, by staff. Now, there were several occasions, you know, that were, were permitted. So, occasionally, the funeral home on a, you know, when we had, there was no staff because it's a holiday. We don't have any staff here, so the funeral homes had been putting them on. The police also have helped them put those on as well. The, there were the blue bags, which was, I, I have some notes and things that were permitted for some of the museums. That was prior to me, so I don't have all the knowledge, but I do know that they would place those bags. But, there are, you know, there are cases that that can be abused, and I, I do know that we have talked about that before. So, the recommendation is that only staff place these bags. There would, in the ordinance, it does say the word "may," and that is on extreme circumstances like, let's say, tree trimming. Somebody, you know, and the borough contracted a tree trimmer, but they're going to need to trim some on Middle Street, and some on Baltimore, and some on College Avenue. Instead of placing them all at once, that tree trimmer can kind of move those around and put them where, you know, if he doesn't need right at one exact tree, but will be going on different streets. Same thing with, let's say, the meters being painted. The meters are currently being painted right now. He doesn't, they don't have to park in an exact space, they can just park close, so the closest they can get, they can bag the meter. That's not something staff would be able to, you know, they'd have to call staff and say, can you move this at, right now, I'm moving to, you know, West Lincoln, or I'm moving to the Square, or I'm moving to Baltimore. So, every hour that they'd want to move, they'd have to call staff to take that off. So, there are certain exceptions that would have to be made, but other than that, the recommendation would be for staff to place those bags, bucks, anything signage-related. And nine, I would say 95% of the time, we do have staff available to place those. The only time we wouldn't be available would pretty much be Sunday mornings or on a holiday. Any questions with that part?
No. Let's keep going through, and then we'll, we'll hit you with questions at the end.
Okay. So, the second part was the church parking on Sundays. And, as, like I said, and when I started in 2002, the churches were already bagging those themselves. I don't have any knowledge of who permitted that, signage, anything, bags. I do know I've spoken with some other staff, parking staff prior to me, and they're saying the same thing. 1993 was the earliest they could remember, and that was being done then. So, it's been quite some time that that's being used. So, in March, when it was advised that only borough staff members should be placing bags, none of the churches had ever bagged or put a sign on after that. So, when they were notified, they did not put any bags on after that. And then, so the recommendation, and, and this comes from, you know, listening to some people talk even this evening. I know we talked prior about having ADA signs and things like that. ADA signs are very specific. They have to be, have certain words, the symbol, a certain height. They have to have the $250. They have to have the $250, you know, the $50 minimum, the $250 max. So, it's very specific and could be very confusing if anything was placed, and it would have to be that exact language. So, there is, it's number eight. Oh, it's already up there. So, this would, it sounds like from listening to some people from the churches this evening, this would work. This would, is MUTCD compliant. It could go on the meters and would only be for Sundays. And then, they, the greeters, the ushers, whoever could, you know, they could direct people where to park. But it would be for churches only. That's all I have for the church. The bus loading and unloading. This, we saw, I mean, we've always had buses here, but we saw the uptick when pickets closed. And, you know, we've tried numerous things. We've tried the two pilots. The first pilot, to me, seemed to work well. There were some issues with it. And that's what is good about pilots, is you can learn the good and the bad. So, there were some issues with it, but I think overall, it did work the best. And it is the best option, I believe. I think it failed just because some businesses wanted it to fail, and they just didn't comply with any part. But I think, in all reality, it did work the best. So, the second pilot was a definite failure. We did create that second pilot to try to include restaurants in that and that would seat up to 50 or more guests. There were two times in the three months that it's been in effect, that it has been used. So, the, for the bus parking, we are recommending there be spaces, again, certain designated spaces. And number 11, John. We have, we have updated the location some based on recommendations and things like that. Some of the people requested not to have a bus in front of them. So, that's why things were changed slightly on this version. But, so, exhibit 11 here, this would be on Queen Street. And that would, since it's a Yen space there, and they are a little bit larger, that could accommodate, two spaces do accommodate a bus there now. That business actually has been purchasing permits now and for two, for two spaces for a bus. So, the top picture just shows the actual physical picture, and then, the bottom is the whole area there to give you an idea of where it is. So, then, if you go to 12, and these would be, you know, in the sign, there's a picture of the sign on here at the end, but it would be very similar to how it was to allow the parking spaces to be paid by the pay-by-phone. And it has a sign. I'll show you that on the end. But, so, here is Baltimore Street down towards La Fever and South Street. So, that would be three spaces there. And then, 13, exhibit 13 is York Street, I believe, yes. So, this is the exact location where we had the very first pilot. And this location seemed to work very well. This location is actually currently being used by a lot of buses that have been directed to that location by staff or business owners and things like that. Number 14 is Carlyle Street. I know it was mentioned by a couple people that this seems like a bad location for a bus just because there's nobody going to visit this house in a bus. But the whole point of these bus spaces was to get them outside of the center of the town so that you don't have the congestion and problems like that. So, this is, we know nobody's going to be visiting that location on a bus, but it gets them out of the downtown area, especially if they're going to drop kids off and then go park somewhere. So, that's a good location, I believe, right there on York, or on Carlyle Street. And then, on Long Lane, which is 15, that was used as well in the pilot program, the first pilot program. And we could put, you know, enough for one bus, two buses, however many you think that that would be needed there. I believe we had two bus parking spots there, six spaces there in the first pilot. And then, number 16 is the sign. So, this is just like a mock-up here because this, the bottom half of it is the sign that you, that we had for the first pilot program. It has all the information that was requested on that sign as far as the max time, the idling, the hours that we have to post to pay, the no parking 2 to 6. The only thing that really changed, we would be changing, would be the top part that had, it had said "oversized vehicle". Now, this says "bus parking only", and it, I believe it said "20-foot minimum" or something like that on it. So, it will be, it will match, but we didn't have, the sign maker made this for us, so we couldn't adjust it exactly. But that's what we came up with. So, that's what we would be recommending, would be this sign in those spaces that I showed. And that would be the, you know, it would charge accordingly for the, it would do the dollar-an-hour rate for the spaces. And then, we have horse-drawn carriages. We didn't speak about that. It wasn't really on our radar, but they were using those previously under a separate ordinance. They were using meter bags under the ordinance for horse carriages. So, we put this in here, and there is the recommendation. This sign as well is MUTCD compliant, would be to place that on Baltimore Street for the loading and unloading, which is already currently in the carriage ordinance at that location. So, it would remove a meter on either side of Baltimore Street for the carriages.
Okay. Thank you. That was very succinct. So, we have four questions ahead of us here, so let's try to get through these here. The goal here, we've been talking about some of these issues for 18 months now. So, I just want to remind everybody a little bit of the background. When many of these ordinance provisions were written, it was a very different landscape in terms of what parking in the borough looked like and what it was used for. 10 years ago, the borough of Gettysburg was on the verge of bankruptcy, and it was the monetization of parking and treating it as a public asset that helped pull us out of a revenue pit. And since doing so, we have been operating not only a balanced budget, but often at a surplus. The revenue we get from parking is absolutely crucial to the operation of our government. It is approximately 23% of all revenues we collect annually. Subsequent to some changes that were made in how we administer parking, we have been facing a legal reality. We have been confronted with the question of whether aspects of the ordinance were being, were written and/or were being meted out in a discriminatory manner. And so, when this question of bus parking came quite pointedly onto our plates about 18 months ago, we realized we did have a discriminatory practice on the books. We had one specific type of business that was allowed to do something that other types of businesses were not, and they were doing it at a massive discount. And it was determined by counsel as well as through consultation with our solicitor and other attorneys that we were, in fact, engaged in a discriminatory practice. So, I don't see that practice coming back because it is discriminatory. So, the choice before us is to come up with a different system that may not please everybody, or we give every business the same privileges that were enjoyed by a small subset of businesses. Were we to do that, it would become an enforcement catastrophe. And it would also result in losses of revenue that this borough could not sustain. So, given that reality, the first pilot program was an attempt to come up with a compromise solution on a place to, we could set aside parking four buses in our downtown core so that they're not disrupting the flow of traffic. I will note that one of these spaces, exhibit 13, the York Street space, this one was specifically problematic in the first pilot. Those spaces identified are used heavily for childcare drop-off at St. James. The residents who live in those houses were very distraught by idling buses. And I think wherever we can, we need to look for a solution here that does not involve putting these buses in residential neighborhoods. A lot of our older homes and our built environment don't have central air. In the hot days of summer, they need their windows open in order to make their homes livable. And having an idling bus sitting outside is not healthy. It's not pleasant. It's not, it would not be acceptable to any of us. It should not be acceptable for those residents there. So, I think we need to find a different solution in that space on York Street. And you're right, it is heavily used right now. We do see a lot of buses parking right there in front of St. James. Unfortunately, that's not a space buses should be parking as it is incredibly disruptive to the flow of traffic both on York Street and exiting Stratton Street onto York. In fact, cars taking that right off of South Stratton have to veer into the oncoming lane to get around a bus that has stopped there in the travel lane. So, that is not a safe place to put a bus. So, I see why you've picked the spaces you have, but I think in that particular instance, we need to keep working that a little bit.
Okay. So, on York Street there, as long as they are parked in that space, there is not a problem with sight or anything. It's when they park behind that parking space that they're in, that you have to go out and around.
Yes, no, no, I'm aware.
But...
Yeah, where they're stopping right now in front of the church, where there are not demarcated spots...
Correct.
Is problematic.
Yes.
Stopping in those spots, which are in front of residences, is problematic. Taking up that parking for childcare drop-off is problematic. So, I think we need to keep working that one a little bit.
Okay.
And then, of course, the other big one that has been, I think, in the front of everybody's mind, is this unfortunate fallout that has affected two specific churches here in the borough. And we are all very sensitive to that. What I think Ms. Thistle has proposed here with the green sign, can we put up exhibit 8, please? Mounting these directly to the meter poles. This is, I think, the compromise position. We've heard comments collected from businesses on Chambersburg Street by a member of car. We've heard from representatives of the church that the sign option is not everybody's favorite. But we've heard from other people that making this carve-out still seems sort of unfair and discriminatory, that if reserved parking is desired, then we have a mechanism in place for reserving parking. So, I believe that this represents the compromise position. And you know it's a good compromise when nobody is happy with it, right? So, that's the overview of where we're at. So, discussion, please.
I'll start. The church didn't ask for a sign. They asked for bags. And the business neighbors to Christ Lutheran do not want signage as it would only confuse people that are looking for parking. We see it all the time, whether it's parade route, whether it's whatever. They see reserved, or they see no parking. They don't look about the day and between the hours of. They just keep driving. Furthermore, in my opinion, that type of sign would disturb the already, as the church mentioned, beautiful and open and historic view of historic Christ Lutheran Church with green and white signs in front of the church. It just messes up the whole view of the streetscape of that beautiful church that was indeed a Civil War hospital. They didn't ask for signage. They asked for bags. And I get it, it's a compromise. I'm not for it. I'd rather have them go, be able to do the bags like they've done for decades.
And I will just quickly say, bags, people don't look at bags either. So, just today, with the no-parking orange bags that we do have for the construction, they said, well, they didn't think, they saw other cars there, so they just parked there because other cars were parked there. I also, just two weeks ago, a woman called and said that she parked there because she thought the meter was broken. And that's what you do, is you park in a no-parking bag when the meter's broken because then you don't have to pay a meter. So, there are, I mean, some people do see it differently. And even though it says "no parking" on a bag, they still will park there. So, it's this, it could be the same argument with the signs, whether they, how they read the signs, how they see the signs.
I understand that, but that sign would be there 24/7, and that bag would not. Messing up the beautiful view of that church.
Correct.
I talked to Father Prey at St. Francis today, and he's, the head of the parish is Father Kelly, and he's out of town. So, I couldn't, he couldn't give the official position of St. Francis. But we did talk through things. And St. Francis isn't in a financial position to, you know, pay for more parking right now or pay into a parking program as they are run off of donations for the most part. So, it's still, he's going to talk to Father Kelly and hopefully give me more of an official position. But it seemed as though either if there was a standing order that the borough bagged them, or they were bagging themselves, or something like this. I don't, I don't know if this could work, or we could do it as a trial and see what the feedback is from the churches as far as the signage. That's what I got from him so far.
Since we have Christ Lutheran here, what's your thoughts? Obviously, I'm for a carve-out of some sort accommodating churches. But they be allowed to respond?
This isn't really the appropriate time for that. That'd be a valid comment, so.
Okay.
But sure, why not? Would you folks be amenable to a compromise position?
Well, I mean, first of all, we appreciate you taking the issue up. And, you know, we understand your dilemma and your challenges. So, we, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to be engaged in the conversation. So, first of all, thank you. I mean, I can't officially speak again, like, you know, for 300 people, you know, because we haven't really reviewed it. Would these go on the meters themselves, or would they be embedded into the sidewalk in separate, in a separate...
They would be on the lower half of the pole, just as you see some in, like, some of the lots that say, like, "head-in-only parking" and things like that. They'd be on the lower half. Yes, on each meter on the pole.
I mean, I think we would, you know, obviously, the bags for us is the cleanest piece because it also, you know, retains your meter as it is. And, you know, it's very clear and open and makes it easier. I think we, I don't know how the rest of the folks feel. I think we would be amenable to discussing the compromise.
The one thing I would point out is lots of times, you know, church service ends about 11:30.
Yeah.
And the bags are off by 11:30. So, you're going to give up parking to the public lots of times from 11:30 to 1 o'clock. People won't park there.
Understood.
When we're done at 11:30, the bags are off. When we're done at 11:30, the bags are off. In fact, usually, people that park there that go to the late service pull them off at 10:30, so when they leave...
Jesus was a compromiser, so we're certainly really... I think the only other thing, I think, for your sake, I would be concerned about, like, just, you know, during snow, like, snow gets piled up along Chambersburg Street, I can see, you know, those kinds of signs getting damaged fairly quickly depending on where they are. That would just be another thing that would come to my mind.
Sure, yeah, fair point.
When we were doing bags, I was frequently a bag putter-onher, you know? And I can honestly say that I did not see other people park. You know, the people that were, I mean, I would get there as anybody else that goes early to do that. You'd get there at 7:15, 7:30, you put the bags on, people don't park there. And then, you know, as Randy said, as they come, they take the bags off, they bring them into the church with them, and when the service is over, the bags are gone. You know, you don't have anything on the pole, you don't have anything impeding the sidewalk, good, they're just gone.
Right, right, yeah. I mean, I do want to underscore too, I mean, the imperative that this service is administered by a borough employee for us is pretty sincere. And the only reason this is really a discussion is just because we do face staffing challenges on Sunday mornings with the parking department. And often, we, our friends at the police department will help with that as well. But if they're busy with something that is pressing and they can't get away from that, you know, we wouldn't want to miss, you know, that window to place those bags, and then we have this, you know, this ongoing issue. The signs, while they can be confusing the other six days of the week, I mean, that is a pretty plain sign. I mean, the word "Sunday" could even be considerably bigger. You know, and the worst-case scenario is somebody sees it and keeps driving and finds another spot. I do have to confirm what Becca said about the bags, which is, you know, we often buy bags for the, for the theater, and I have to stand there and chase people out of those spots. They see a bag, they don't read it, they park there anyways. It happens every single time. You know, the bags are not a silver bullet either. People's behavior is unpredictable. I don't know that there's a perfect solution here.
Can I suggest something? If you go in a Walmart, there is a water-filled sign with the wheels. You can put it on it instead of putting on a this, so that solves their problem. They can put that, and they can put it also the handicap. Because if I go and park there and I'm going into church, that is considered for me the church parking also. But the issue is with this sign, there is no handicap or accessible only. So if they have, instead of putting a bag, they can invest some money into that movable sign, have a water filled with it, so you stand up right there, and whenever they have to move, they just roll over.
No, thank you for that suggestion. That actually gets us right back to the original problem, though, which is the self-administration of municipal services. Parking prohibition is a police action, and we should not be allowing private citizens to engage in police actions. I am gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that we return the conversation to the members of council at this point. So are there any other thoughts on either where to put buses? Are we in favor of the metered bus spaces, church parking, or...
I have more comments about buses, but I don't want to jump in. If other council members have comments about church parking, or thoughts, or feedback, or anything.
At this end of the table, are people in support of the compromise position with the sign, or no?
Well, I thought the sign was a good compromise, and I feel like people will respect it, driving past it. I don't feel like people will see a church sign, church parking only, and they're gonna, I'm just gonna park there intentionally. I think they'll respect it if you had to change the time to accommodate the service and maybe make it shorter. And, you know, I'm not sure how much a loss of revenue we would sustain, an hour or so. I mean, I think that's nominal and...
We wouldn't lose any revenue.
Because it's free anyway, so.
Until 1 o'clock.
So I see that as a reasonable compromise.
I agree, it's a good compromise.
I'm open to the compromise. I would like to talk to St. Francis as well about the sign.
All right. Okay, I think we're moving in the right direction on that, pending some conversations. And, all right, buses.
Well, one more comment on that before I move to buses. I appreciate what, what you just said about we're not losing any revenue on that. The borough itself is not losing revenue, parking revenue from Sundays, 7 to 1. If anybody doesn't park there because they see that sign after 1, we're losing revenue. But what I'm even more concerned about is the effect that it's going to have on the small businesses on Chambers, first block of Chambersburg Street. Going on to buses, a bus can't fit in two spaces. It's a minimum of two and a half. And they're always hangover, and then they're illegally parked, sometimes blocking traffic view on turning, sometimes hanging over into a ADA space when they're not an ADA bus at all. But that one spot, that one slide that you showed, I guess it's at the diorama area?
Yes.
That's, that can't be just two spaces, it has to be bigger. It's gotta be bigger, a three space.
We had made it three originally. She says that two buses fit. I know there's another business that two buses fit, or that one bus fits in two spaces. Some of our spaces are 17 feet, and some of our spaces go up to 21 feet. So depending on location, they are different. On the first block on Chambersburg, I can tell you somewhere near the A&amp;A, there's some 17-foot spaces, they're pretty tiny. So they're not all the exact, because that was to fit in as many spaces that they could.
So it would be customized then, but depending upon how big the actual spaces are?
And I mean, you will have larger buses, and some of the buses are smaller. But mostly, the two businesses that are currently using permit bags or paying by coin in those locations, they are only using two spaces.
Okay.
But we are recommending in three in some of those areas just because we do know that in some locations it does take three.
Sure. And if you can go to the slide about the, on the bus parking only sign?
16.
I know you said it's just a, it's just a draft, it's just a...
Number eight?
No, it was 16.
The, the most important thing that I think needs, needs to be on this sign is that very thing at the top, bus parking only. It needs to be the largest font on the sign.
Okay, and that was, we couldn't...
And it needs to be at the top, where it is.
Yeah, we couldn't exactly make, as soon as we made it bigger, it wouldn't fit on this, but like I said...
I feel like, I feel like bus parking only is way more important than the location number.
Okay.
Bus parking only, largest font, and even still, there's gonna be problems. But I do love the idea, President Moon, about specific bus parking only spots in our town. We have to be very careful about where they are. And, and I agree that, that area right there at the, in front of St. James is, is not a good spot at all for the childcare drop-off and the residents that are there, many that don't have air conditioning, that have their windows open and whatnot. It's not a good spot. But I, but I feel like there are some, several spaces in town which would make the most logical sense for a bus and not intrude on things like childcare drop-off or residential. The first spot that comes to mind is on Carlisle, the first block of Carlisle Street, right there on the side of the hotel. The first spot that comes to mind, who is that bothering? And it's right there at the center of the square.
It is a good spot.
The hotel has lots of buses, the Majestic has lots of buses, all of the, you know, the businesses, the retail and the restaurants that might have visitors on buses coming to the center of town. And that, right there on the right-hand side, that...
So that's a perfect example of two spaces.
It's their space.
That's two spaces right there.
Yeah.
So that's a perfect example of those two spaces.
That's an example of a spot that if it were big enough, that's, that's a great location. Anyway, thank you. But I like this idea, this concept of specifically reserved bus parking only.
Can I point one thing out, just very quickly? This, the, the bus parking is great, but in my estimation, we don't have a bus parking issue. What was described initially was a bus loading and unloading issue, and this does not address that. This is for parking. Now, some buses may go there, park and unload and load, they're not gonna do it, they're gonna stop in traffic, most of them load and unload like they do now. So the original issue that was brought up is the loading and unloading, unless I missed the...
No, I hear that, but they're illegally parking.
So you are abso...
It is a parking problem.
They're not parking, they're stopping. There's, there's the legal distinction. The chief has been very good at educating us in that in the past.
Yeah.
The issue here is that we have this higher volume of buses coming downtown, and what we would need if we enact this as a practice is we would need all of the businesses who are bringing those buses to communicate with their drivers at a time and say, you're gonna park here if that spot's available, and if it's not, you're gonna go here. And I would point out again, and we've been pointing this out for 18 months now, buses can currently safely unload on any of the four quadrants of the square without impeding traffic, and then the business owners can make arrangements with the fire hall for incredibly reasonable parking. They usually take a pittance of a donation, they're happy to have the donation, and that parking lot was built for these community uses. Most municipalities would never waste time trying to come up with this sort of accommodation. We are doing it because we understand the value of these businesses and the value of this bus business for our downtown core businesses now that Pickett's is closed. You go to any major city that has a large tourist population, the bus drops you at your destination, and then they leave town. They go to the Port Authority, they go to New Jersey, they go somewhere else for six or eight hours. They are not expecting to get a parking space downtown. And then they come back and get you at the allotted time. That is already possible. What we are entertaining the notion of here is a service that no other municipality offers. And again, it is a compromise position. Any other thoughts?
Just getting back to the Queen Street, if you could pull that up. Yeah, so just yesterday, when I was making a right onto Queen Street, there were two very large minivans, RVs parked there, unloading kids, checking things. I don't know what they were doing, but they were getting ready to, I guess, visit Gettysburg, and I couldn't see to get onto Queen Street. It's really tough when there's anything large parked there to see, and it's a very tight squeeze between the traffic oncoming onto Steinware, and then, of course, coming onto Steinware and making a left, you have to creep out very slowly, almost into the walkway, to be able to see beyond the people that are on the street and the oncoming traffic that's oftentimes zipping by. But, I mean, the space looks great, I think it's great to have that there. It's just, my concern is, as Chad pointed out, the bus is just encroaching on other spaces and parking, you know, because they're excited to get people off the bus. I don't know if, if these folks dropped off and moved on, a lot of buses will park there, and then I see them later down at the end at the rec park. You probably see them too, Judy, like, see them, like, lined up at the rec park, so they have the idea, like, don't sit here, don't idle, you know, don't take up this corner because it's, the visibility's pretty tough at that corner.
So you do see coaches down at the rec park? Taking advantage of that long way parking?
Every night, every night, unless there's a baseball game. And even when there's a baseball game, traffic, cars packing the parking lot, and then the buses will take the very back by the rotor, I think the rotary pavilions in the very back, and the lines.
All right, any other input on this issue?
So, I don't think that, maybe I'm alone here, but I don't remember hearing anyone say that the first pilot program was successful. And I don't think, I don't believe that repackaging it and putting up a new bus sign is going to fix the issue. This is something that's needed about four months in the year. So you're gonna have these spots created that are not gonna be utilized like other parking spots will be for regular people. And I also don't buy that businesses or other homes want buses in front of their place, you know? So, as of right now, under the current pilot program, it's $54 because you need, you need at least three spots to book for the day, so you got, that's for one bus, 54 bucks, which is cost prohibitive. I think the rest of the pilot program would work if it was affordable for businesses. So my recommendation would be to make a per meter, if you want to buy into the program, be 150 a month for the meter, and then you use the same booking procedure you would use now. So you'd have 150 a month on that meter for revenue, and then all the time that it's not being used for that, you'd also be making money off that meter for anyone else. I put a lot of thought into it, that's the best I could come up with to take care of the issue.
So, so I understand for some businesses, it's four months of the year, but for other businesses, it's 10 months of the year. There are, there are other businesses that are bringing buses consistently throughout the year. So the functionality that already exists is priced at the full value of the meter per day. When we reserve meters for buses, we're paying $18 per meter per day, and we pass that on to the bus companies, and they're happy to pay it. I have never had a single bus driver say, or bus tour company say, this is cost prohibitive. Most of them are amazed that we have even gone so far as to reserve parking for them because that is not something tour operators expect. They expect to drop their people, go somewhere else, and come back. The $150 for essentially unlimited use requires...
Well, you'd have to book it like you would now for the time you would need to.
Right. It, it represents a potential loss of revenue that I don't think we could, we haven't even sat down and done the math on it. It would be staggering. It would be, it would be tens and tens of thousands of dollars.
Well, the hotels have 150 a month, and they, their bags are always on.
Yep, that's correct.
So I'm, and that's not what I'm proposing, I'm trying to think of how we make it affordable, make this program work if that was something...
So what, what the designated bus parking represents is, again, it's the compromise position. You're only paying a dollar an hour instead of paying the $18 per space for two or three spaces, right? So it is a massive savings for the vendor, right? A dollar an hour. You don't have to pay the reservation. We are not engaging the parking department in payroll hours of placing bags, removing bags, issuing permits, and then coming out to do the enforcement and make sure that the permits are being executed properly and legally. It's basically a concierge parking service for buses. The reason the first program didn't work is because the businesses were not sending the buses to those spaces. That is why it didn't work. The businesses responsible for bringing these buses downtown need to work with those buses and make sure they're going to proper places. They can't be double parked in front of a church idling for two hours. They just can't. They have to be somewhere else, they have to be somewhere responsible. I think if we can create a position, you know, a program that benefits the business community that is bringing these buses in, and they're willing to work with the program, it could be really successful.
I do, to the chief's point, though, it doesn't fix the safety issue of drop-off, whereas this metered position would.
There are lots of buses doing their unloading in front of St. James right now, and then those passengers are walking to their destination. We have all seen it, we've all seen it. So parking the next space up or some reasonably proximal space for the same reason, I don't see that as a huge, huge burden on the passengers. And again, you can legally stop and unload on any of the quadrants of the square and then make almost free or reasonably inexpensive arrangements with the fire department. almost free or reasonably inexpensive arrangements with the fire department.
Do we know how many buses capitalize on that fire department space? I mean, do we...
Um, no, we've never asked the fire department that. I can tell you that...
I'm just curious.
Uh, the Majestic utilizes that. Um, when we have school shows, we'll bring in twenty buses at a time. We'll put nine on uh, the first block of Carlisle Street, and we put the remaining eleven in the, uh, fire department parking lot. We do that for three to six days in December, and we make an annual contribution to the fire department of a hundred dollars, and they are grateful for it, and they're happy to work with us.
The hotel does that as well. I don't know how many buses, but I do know that the hotel works with the fire department as well for their buses for overnight stays.
All right. Cognizant of the hour in that we have more things to, uh, cover tonight, um, if there are thoughts you'd like to share, this is the time on this issue. Do we think that staff is moving in the correct direction with, um, designated metered bus parking spaces? Whether the locations are perfect or not, do we think this is the right direction to move?
I like the designated bus parking spaces. And again, we hate it, it doesn't work. Go back to what it was. But I, I kind of like that for a tourist town. As I've said before, the bus parking thing is, issue is not going to go away. There were only getting more of them because Pickett's is no longer here, and we are fortunate to have a restaurant that can seat five hundred that's bringing in buses. That's great. Bring them to town. Park legally.
Anyone else?
I imagine that this is going to generate more revenue for the borough and the businesses in the borough, simply because if, I know if I lived out of town and like, when I travel to DC, you know, parking's a premium there, and that's why you often take a bus, DC, New York, because you want to not have to try to find parking in the city. I can imagine as people understand that there's a designated space, that this is going to really help, help the borough businesses.
Yep, and, um, one of the considerations of the first pilot program too was trying to identify, um, less utilized parking spaces so that we're not necessarily losing, uh, large chunks of meter revenue. That we are putting them, uh, in places, um, where auto traffic is less likely to park, so that we're not, you know, necessarily impacting that, that inventory.
I think the bus companies, I'll bet, are surprised and amazed at how accommodating we are as a community to our buses. Uh, I mean, look at the discussion tonight. We're really trying to come up with the best, uh, solution.
Do you feel staff is moving in the correct direction with the designated bus parking spaces?
Yes, I believe that's all they can do right now.
Mr. Berger?
Yep.
Do you feel like that's something you could get behind at some point?
I'm opposed to the first program, but they get Malone in that.
All right. So, it sounds like you're moving in the right direction, but it maybe still needs a little attention. Okay. Anything else on parking tonight? I want to thank everybody for a lively and civil discussion. That's how it gets done. All right, uh, we're going to move on to new business. Madame Mayor and Mrs. Butterfield, along with our colleague Ms. Sanders, have been working on our Sekah Gahara relationship with our sister city. And I hear we have some news and developments.
Yes, they're coming to Gettysburg on July, um, nineteenth and twentieth. The first day they would work the Park Service. We're going to have a welcome committee, but then the Park Service will take over their itinerary. That night, they'll be dining at the Dalvin House. And also to bring something, they're in, they're coming to see how to, how we use history to improve our economy. So we're going to be showing them things like that from the Park Service and about visitation. And on the first night, uh, we decided it'd be very nice if they could hear the Hundred Nights of Tax.
Yes.
And that'll close their day. But we found out the second day, they're only going to be here for half a day in Gettysburg. So we were thinking about the Train Museum, which is run by the foundation, did I get that right? Yes, taking them there, and also then the Park Service can take them to the Wilms House and just show them the core of Gettysburg and how we do industry and interact with tourism. Can I sum that up quickly?
That was really good.
I summed that up quickly.
Yes, you did.
And they're only here for half a day. They already made their, um, accommodation arrangements. Uh, we're working with, um, getting the logistics of getting them from point A to B and how to do that. And it's actually, they're coming together very nicely, and in the fall, it's in October, and I don't know the date right off my head, if somebody can correct me. But, um, we're sending a representative from Gettysburg to our sister city, and that's going to be Chris Quinn from the National Park Service.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you all for working on that. Anything to add?
They are not coming here as tourists, and the committee is very cognizant of that. Theirs is a learning mission, a business mission, and, um, so it's different that if they were coming here as tourists. And I've been pleased that the committee stays on track that way, and, um, that's important to move things along. And I think our committee, we're working with Park Service in conjunction with the Park Service. There's a representative from the Park Service, fact is the superintendent, Chris Heiser, is involved. We have civilians, we're working with Destination Gettysburg. They are taking up a lot of the logistics of what's going on. Uh, Main Street Gettysburg's involved, and Councilmember Sanders, Butterfield, myself, and also our borough manager. So it's coming together very nicely. Just one quick funny thing about Sekah Gahara's website. I visited there today, and, uh, they're advertising their visitor center, if you will, which they did not have until 2017. They started planning on that. And it wasn't until 2020 that they actually built their visitor center. But in that center, you see a film, and on their website, it says, uh, that this film is, uh, compiled with loud noise, strobe lights, and vibrating seats. So they recommend that it is unsuitable for the farm, for the following, uh, folks. It's unsuitable for small children, the elderly, pregnant women, those with poor physical condition, those who get travel sickness, those who have abnormal blood pressure, heart disease, or, um, fear lights, dark, and loud sound. So that sort of says to me that only able-bodied men are sitting through the film at Sekah Gahara.
Maybe having panic attacks.
I forgot to add something. We're also working with the, um, Japanese Department of Gettysburg College.
Oh, excellent.
And we even have it pinned down to, if they're coming from DC to have cell phone numbers, if they are caught in traffic and have contact from the college, because she speaks Japanese, that we can figure out where they are and what's going on.
Great. Wonderful. Well, thank you all for working on that.
We have to have a next meeting this week.
Are we set to move on? All right, thank you all. Chief Glenny?
Uh, in our last, uh, leadership meeting, I spoke to Mr. Butterfield and the manager about the possibility of raising our part-time police officer wage. We are currently, once again, uh, at the bottom of all full-service, full-time departments in the county. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, I think having some impact on our part-time recruitment. Not that there's a lot of people banging down the doors to work part-time. And, uh, our part-time availability is, is down, um, as well. And just, I put together a, a, a spreadsheet, and I think that the only one I got sent out to is, is Mr. Moon, uh, and Mr. Gable. But I added some additional information. I believe that Councilman Berger has seen it too. Uh, but just for comparison, uh, the part-time rates for other agencies, and these are only within Adams County. Carroll Valley Borough is currently paying thirty-six dollars an hour part-time. I should preface this by saying we pay twenty-three eighty-nine per hour. Carroll Valley Borough is at thirty-six dollars an hour. Littlestown, who doesn't currently utilize part-time, but they have their part-time salary specified in their collective bargaining agreement, is at thirty-three sixteen for a first year, and then year two and thereafter, thirty-four seventy-eight. Eastern Adams Regional, um, which had been the lowest-paying full-service municipality and, or full-service police department in the county, is paying their part-time officers twenty-nine oh-six, um, an hour. If you look at the Eastern Adams contract, they specify that the part-timers start at the starting wage of a full-time officer, which is eighty percent of their top rate. So they have that specified, so it changes per year. Cumberland is currently paying twenty-five seventy plus shift differential for nights. Uh, in talking with Chief Trosel out there, he is requesting that they raise their part-time rate to thirty dollars an hour. Uh, they're also attempting to hire part-time. And then Liberty Township, which is a small part-time police department, um, they're currently paying twenty-six an hour. My proposal was, uh, if, if we could look at it, would be to raise the part-time police wage in the borough to the previous year's starting salary. So for example, for the calendar year 2024, if we raise the part-time wage to that hourly wage of a first-year patrol officer in 2023, that way the part-timers are, the part-time officers are still below our full-time officer salary-wise. But it gives them an, an idea and, uh, of, of where they're going to be. And then I did a breakdown. And for 2024, the year we're in, obviously, um, as I mentioned earlier, we pay twenty-three eighty-nine an hour. If we were to, if we were to change it to what I had suggested there, we would currently be paying twenty-seven oh-two an hour, uh, which is still substantially less than most of these other places. But I, you know, I, I think it's a bit fair, uh, and, and in projecting out till the end of this year, the, uh, and just doing some quick math, if, if things stay on the same track, we use twenty-nine hundred sixty-two hours of part-time. Uh, so at the twenty-three eighty-nine an hour, that's seventy thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars. At twenty-seven oh-two an hour, that would have been eighty thousand thirty-three dollars. So the difference, what I would project out for the difference from the old rate to the new rate in '24 would be ninety-two hundred seventy-one dollars. And I, I went ahead and put twenty-five together. Uh, currently, what we were slated to pay in twenty-five was twenty-four eighty-four an hour. The new proposed rate would be twenty-eight ten an hour. Um, if, if I, you know, just a, an educated estimate at three thousand hours, uh, making the number easier at our, what we're currently supposed to pay, that'd be seventy-four thousand five twenty. At the twenty-eight ten, that would be eighty-four thousand three hundred, so it'd be ninety-seven hundred eighty dollars, assuming three thousand part-time hours. Now, there is a potential, this sounds strange in, in raising money, but there is a potential that if we get more part, part-time folks on, we could be filling more shifts with part-time hours, which is the idea anyway. So the, the, it could, and again, could, could, I gotta, gotta say that, underline it, bold, could realize a potential savings in the end. Uh, but, you know, that, that would take a crystal ball that I don't have to, to, uh, to say that for sure, so...
That's kind of a long chain of digits for everybody.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Absorbed it all, right? Uh, so the long and short of it here is the chief is asking for us to bring our part-time wage, uh, up to, not even quite where other agencies are, but to a more competitive wage. And in 2023, we spent about ninety-eight hundred dol-, no, I'm sorry, we, um, we spent about eighty-six, eighty-seven thousand... No, I'm sorry, we spent about seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah.
And so he's basically asking for an increase of approximately ten thousand dollars a year, you know, give or take, to, uh, affect what is essentially an eighteen percent raise on this, um, part-time wage. And that sounds like a lot. All of our other, um, employees, let's see, our non-uniforms generally are getting somewhere around four and a half to five percent annually. Uniform employees are getting around six percent annually. Administrative staff, who we try to take care of, we've, we've usually granted somewhere between four and six percent annually. This wage climbs a little bit slower. But, uh, the chief is absolutely correct in that our current contract allows us to utilize part-timers to fill shifts that we would, uh, on our previous contract, we would have been compelled to fill with, uh, full-time sworn officers. So when we are short-staffed, we're filling those shifts with officers who are then getting, um, overtime. Uh, and as we are the budgetary body, we have a responsibility to talk about those overtime numbers. Two years ago, we paid almost a quarter of a million dollars in overtime. And it was because we were short-staffed, and it was because, um, we were compelled to fill those shifts with full-timers as opposed to part-timers. So I believe the chief is correct, that even if we do, um, decide to move this line item by ten thousand dollars here, we would still probably be saving a dramatic amount of money in the long term. I think that's a fair statement. The exact numbers, we wouldn't be able to really know until in, you know, in retrospect. So, probably the responsible thing to do here is to look at affecting these changes in the next budget year. Now that said, we have another consideration. It's just that we will have unspent payroll dollars in the police department this year. So, you know, if we were looking at, say, five thousand dollars this year to, to raise this wage, it could be easily absorbed by existing allocated payroll dollars that we have because we have two unfilled positions. We recently allocated some of that money to help pay for the, um, eventuality of a human resources trainee to replace, uh, Ms. Right, uh, replace Karap. It was our money. We didn't steal it. We were perfectly within our rights to reallocate that since it was going to be unspent. And so there is money to, to cover this this year, were we, were we to choose to do that. Uh, things to consider however are, in just really three to four short months, we are going to start digging into next year's budget. And while this ten thousand dollars is not a huge, uh, sum, we did last year add two, uh, full-time, uh, police positions, which largely have been paid for with federal ARPA dollars. And over the next two years, we need to start figuring out how to pay for those out of tax dollars, because the ARPA monies will be gone by the end of 2016. So, uh, if we don't want to see a quarter of a million-dollar tax hike in two years, we should reasonably and responsibly consider, uh, small incremental increases starting this year, um, to that millage, so that, um, it's not a big punch in the gut for every single taxpayer in the borough come 2027. Two officers costing approximately a quarter of a million dollars a year. We're looking at averaging, uh, probably about two full, point-two mils that we're going to have to make up for to pay for those officers. In a few months, we're going to start asking department heads to make their budget, um, proposals for the next year, and given that we do need to start making up that expense, we're going to be asking departments to really be very careful in what dollars they ask for. So something to consider is if we're going to be raising this temporary, or, not, sorry, not temporary, this part-time, um, line item by ten thousand dollars annually, you know, that needs to come out of somewhere else as well. Public safety being by far our largest expenditure, this is something that we must be cognizant of and responsible in our planning. Does anybody have any questions for the chief about how he arrived at this proposed wage and, um, or how he utilizes part-timers?
How many part-timers do you currently have?
How many part-timers do you currently have?
Currently have five, but they range in availability. Two of the, two of the five have other full-time police jobs. So one of them, for example, can only work shifts with RB squad work. So if there's an opening on A squad, I can't fill with him. The other ones' shifts are all over the board, so his availability is very low. One of those five was basically brought on board to assist with special events, so their availability is low. And it's, it's an availability thing right now. And, you know, we are actively trying to recruit for part-time, but again, it's difficult. Nobody, short of somebody that's working full-time somewhere else, really wants to look at working part-time. So we're hoping to attract them, but, you know. Unfortunately, Carroll Valley's got most of the full-time police officers working part-time at $36 an hour, which there's, you know, I would love it if council said, well, they raise you $36 an hour, I don't expect that in a million years, wouldn't ask it. But, you know, that, that's a long one to answer your question, hopefully, but availability's a real thing. If I had one that was available, you know, carte blanche, it may not be an issue.
So being the lowest rate in the county really hurts attracting.
It does.
We're the busiest.
We are, we are the busiest agency, as I, probably some of you say ad nauseam, pounding your heads with the monthly report, the busiest agency dispatched by the emergency services dispatch center, by far.
And the rate you came up with is looking at what a first year...
It's the first-year officer broken down hourly from the previous year. So any of our first-year officers, I felt, shouldn't feel slighted if the, if the part-timers not making what they're making. It's just, it's kind of throwing a bone to the full-timers, too, and saying, hey, I understand, and, but we're, and, you know, it, and the reason I picked that number out is it's fairly simple for the part-timers to figure out what they're moving to next year, next year, next year, based on our contract.
And our first-year officers are at the low end in the county.
Yeah, our first-year, yes, just like part-time, our first-year officers, and actually, our top-rate officers are at the lowest of any full-service police department in the county.
And that's Littlestown?
That, oh, Littlestown is, yeah, we won't talk about Littlestown. But we're, we're, like, it's on a spreadsheet I made, and I can get you all a copy of it, but...
I'm about to send it out.
Okay. The, the biggest one is Cumberland, and we're about between five and six grand below Cumberland. So that's the one that really, I think, sticks in the officer's crawls a bit, if you will.
$3,000 hours, that's like the maximum you were guessing, you were assuming, just to get that number?
So I, I went through, and I actually did just break down and converted this over all the way back to '21. And in '21, we had 2,858 part-time hours, and '22, we had 3,829 part-time hours. '23, 3,354. And when I did the math of what we've used so far this year in part-time, broke it down by month, and then we were at just under 3,000. So I thought 3,000 would be a reasonable projection.
Yeah, it does seem to be kind of, you know, ish, plus or, plus or minus, you know, 500, 600 hours.
And, and I'll be honest, sometimes we go over now, because we get, we utilize a lot of the traffic grants the state puts out, and it's really hard to budget, because I can budget what we're supposed to get, but then it's actually a good, bad position to be in, because if they have extra money, they'll often give it to us, because we utilize it, and we do, like, the pedestrian enforcement grant is an example of it. If there's, there's usually a lot of money left over in that, well, the traffic safety folks will send that to us to use, because we actually put people out and use it. So we're getting that money in, we're actually, it's not costing the borough anything to have a traffic safety officer out for those times. And sometimes we use those for part-time officers, so that shoots that up as well, that number.
All right. So ruminate on this, think about it, and we will revisit this next month, and please consider whether you want to see this as an immediate change, or whether you think it's more prudent to wait for the next budget year. Either way, we've got some balancing to do, right? If we do it immediately, we will be taking that out of existing budget allocations, but we need to pay for it next year. And so that's something to think about. If we wait till next year, we still have to figure out how to pay for that, as well as a portion of these new officer positions, so.
Can I say one more, just a quick thing about police, completely outside of this. I was very happy to learn today a report I heard from both Detective Evans, and then I got an email from Dave Sanders, that Detective Evans did, in fact, pass both the written and oral portions of the promotional examination, and he will be sending a, or dropping a letter off to the borough tomorrow. So I'm, I'm very excited, especially for, I'll say a little early, Sergeant Evans, and I would really like to see us get that on the motion for July's meeting, if we could. So if you see him, you might, even though it might be a little premature, just tell him, good job, congratulations, it's well deserved.
Yes, we will have a motion on July's business agenda to decide whether or not to promote Sergeant Evans, and I personally strongly recommend that everybody support that.
Real quick, before we go on, so, did we skip over service regulations?
Um, no. So when the original draft of the agenda was put out, it was errantly listed as the physical fitness requirement, which was a different request the chief had submitted at our last leadership meeting. We're not ready to discuss that yet. We still have some consultations with both the Civil Service Commission, as well as our labor attorneys.
Okay.
Thank you for catching that, though. All right. Anything else for the chief here tonight, folks?
All right, thank you for listening.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the presentation. I did send everybody the chief's spreadsheet. Please look it over, and if you have questions, chief is at your disposal 24 hours a day.
Absolutely.
All right.
For $26 an hour.
All right. That takes us to our second public comment section of the evening. This is not restricted to items on the agenda. You can speak about any subject you wish. We ask that you limit yourself to five minutes. Please use the podium. We need your name, as well as your address of residence.
My name is Nancy Goodmister, and I live and own at 307 and 309 Baltimore Street, which is the Shriver House Museum. And we are just wrapping up our bus season, and I have paid for every single bus that has come to the Shriver House, and I've spent a total of $420 total, and I've paid for every single bus. We have two more buses left this month. One comes on Friday at 4:00, or whatever day, and the other one comes at 8:30 at night on Friday. So as I mentioned before, there are many buses that I don't pay for, because they like to come at 8:30 at night. I'm very, very curious, when I, when you started the first program for the large vehicles, buses, at the end of it, I came to meetings, and everyone here agreed that it really didn't work out. It was not a very successful thing. So you decided to start a second program. Well, I came to the meetings when everybody at this board agreed it really wasn't a success. So why are you going back to one that you all agreed was not a success, and trying to do that over again? But I do have one huge question. I see that the one, the parking space for a bus on the third block of Baltimore Street is in front of Mr. G's Ice Cream or Reed's Winery, and I'm curious, there is not going to be one on the, on my side of Baltimore Street?
No, you requested us not to put one there.
Oh, but, so that I can still park buses there, I just don't have to not use that space?
Correct. It wouldn't be a designated bus.
I didn't request you not to do one. I'm asking you to go back to and honor the code that is in your ordinance. You didn't repeal the ordinance, it's still in the ordinance, and when it says "may," let somebody use one, that's, if they follow all the stipulations and the applications, then you should, then you would do it. And so I don't know where it's saying that you wouldn't do it. So I'm just curious, because, you know, again, I was told that two times it was used in front of Teak. So why are we putting a rust space back there in front of Teak? And why are you putting one in front of Reed's, when I live on that street, I see that street every single day during bus season, and occasionally, a bus will park down there, but I get over 200 buses. So I don't understand why you are now not working with me at all, which is putting the buses across the street. And I was told that this is when I can ask questions during the business meeting.
This is when you can make comments.
No, you told me I could ask questions.
We receive your comment now.
I thought Chad's idea of parking the buses on Carlisle Street was excellent, but then you have to look at it, is for the whole rest of the year, if those signs are up, that means nobody can park in those first three or four spots, because, again, we sort of have a bus season here. And I'd love to know, I've asked many, many people to tell me, who abused the meter bags? Because I can tell you, the Shriver House never, ever abused the meter bags. And I don't understand where it's a safety issue. The police said that it's totally legal, the state says it's totally legal that we can do it. It seems like you're causing the borough more headaches by having to have your staff put these meter bags on and off. I don't have to step into the street, it's just walking out the door, putting the meter bag on, taking it off. And as I said last month, that was my meter bag covered in the picture there, and the reason I did it is because I had one bus at 5:00 in the afternoon on a very busy Memorial Day weekend. So why would I follow the rules, I hate to not follow them, but why would I have the meter bagged from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, when there's only one bus coming at 5:00 in the afternoon? When I am totally mature enough to put that bag on and take the bag off? I just don't understand it. I just wish you would use common sense, because, again, it worked for 27 years, and I, like decades, just like the churches, it worked for decades. And never once did a policeman come to me because there was an issue, or a parking person come because there was an issue. We followed your regulations, it worked smoothly. I wish you would just reconsider. And now I'm pretty much done, so you have lots of time to talk about it, and I would be more than happy to sit down and talk with you, because, for example, when you say that you should get in touch with the bus companies, I make a contract with, for example, World Strides, right? Every time World Strides comes right now, they're on a different bus. So we never have contact with that bus driver, so I can't tell him where to go. Although, when they get to the Shriver House, we do give them, as I've mentioned before, a note that says, "You're welcome to park here, you have to turn off your meter, and don't, or you have to turn off your motor, and don't start it again until all the buses are back on." So we're trying really, really hard to work with the community. So I'd appreciate it, and I'm more than willing to sit down and talk, not to yell and scream, but just to have a conversation and explain this side of things that you may not understand. Thank you.
Public comment.
My name is Paul Witt. I'm a hotel owner-operator on St. Edward Avenue, also on an HARB. First, I've been a big defender of the sign ordinance for years. I wanted to be strong, I want to be enforced. A couple of points I've gone through with the provisions of, I've seen on the sign ordinance, no protective order. I do agree that the sign faces may be changed with the new ordinance, which makes a lot of sense. Signs on property may be confiscated, which I think that is probably well, well within the rights of the borough. Multiple businesses may have multiple signs, that's perfectly reasonable for multiple businesses in the same operation. The one, one foot per building facade, I think is kind of ridiculous. I think that businesses should have 50 square feet per street frontage, on any street frontage. These are for streets, not alleys. Alleys may be a compromise of 25 square feet for an alley in a business. There's a mention there, illumination limited to when the businesses are open. Where did this come from? Who's going to enforce this, and why was it done? 40% fenestration coverage. Fenestration? Didn't come with the word, think of the word, windows? Well, blame it on Harry Eastman, I guess.
It was a new word to me, too.
Yeah. I think it's going to be changed, this would be for the first floor, windows only, which makes a lot of sense. I'm just wondering, there's a lot of, a lot of signs being installed illegally around town. How is this going to be taken care of? Who decided not to enforce the sign ordinance in Gettysburg? This is going to blow up big time for council. When these people have illegal signs, and are you going to get rid of them? Are you going to let them go in? Just a couple of quick print pictures. I don't have a tape measure. I would guess this, this picture with the frame is 6 by 7, which is 42 square feet, as opposed to 50 square feet, Max, you were talking about. One square foot sign is one foot by one foot, or 12 inches by 12 inches. A 3 by 4 inch sign is 12 square inches, so. That's all I have. Good luck.
Thank you, sir. And I'm not upset that you pointed out, again, that I'm terrible at math, that is totally fine.
I think of my conventional expert up here.
Any other public comment?
Sir?
My name's Bill Hewitt, I live in Franklin Township on Seven Stars Road. Chief's discussion tonight was appropriate for what I wanted to talk about, and that was supporting the police. You guys have a heck of a job. You get up every day, interact with people all day long, that at best, they're having the worst day of their life. At worst, those people are having a day where they want to make that policeman have the worst day of their lives. And so I wanted to thank you for their courage. I know if it comes up again, I would appreciate if the borough council would allow retiring policemen to have their weapon, and accordingly, I'll pay for it. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Last chance. All right.
TJ Patel, 606 York Street, Gettysburg. I'm supporting Chief Pudison to hire this year versus the next year, because if we pay overtime, it's worth of, waste of money, then we have a more police officer on duty. So please pass the bill next month and allow to hire him a part-time officer as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending tonight.